All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Order of Business, October 11th, 2022, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please roll call?
Yes, Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Mo Badun.
Here.
Nancy Brier.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Ray Muscat is absent. Tom Winsell.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by these two gentlemen right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
Now, I know, so I could help, but Clerk, you may want to give her write down your names, if you don't mind, because they'll need that for the record. All right, next up on the agenda, item number three, agenda approved.
Council Chair.
Councilman Badun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda of the regular meeting of October 11th, 2022, as submitted.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Badun and supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman Badun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 27th, 2022, as outlined in 4A.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Badun and supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. I'd like to apologize, go back a little bit, go backwards to the roll call. Councilman Ray Muscat will not be here today. His daughter is having a grandchild, daughter's having a grandchild. This will be number six for him, so congratulations, Ray Muscat.
Congratulations, Councilman.
All right, next up is public hearings and comment on agenda items only. You will have two minutes. Please come on up and state your name, city, and street, please.
Hi, my name is Ali Kreist from Dearborn on Mayburn. I have a food trailer on Ford Road and Telegraph. The only issue I have with the trailer is the 45-day permit we have in the city of Dearborn Heights. It's a big inconvenience, as every 45 days we have to renew it. So I was just hoping if we can ask for a 180-day renewal instead of 45 days, that would help us out a lot, and I'm pretty sure it'd help you guys out, too.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Let's read the agenda packet today. On the agenda today, so good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else, any items on the agenda? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
So for 7A, I just want to let the council know, we have these three homes that you'll see later on the agenda. We're selling these as, obviously, we put them on bid net, and it's kind of an emergency sale, because we've, again, a lot of residents complaining about the homes, all three homes. They're infested with rats, and we got to try to get rid of them. I know it was a suggestion that some people said we should demolish those homes. We had, our building department went inspected the homes. They're structurally sound. They said, oh, they need just a little bit of TLC, some money invested in these homes, and rehab them, and just put them back, sell for homeowner occupied.
Okay.
So that's one of the reasons that we put those out, you know, we have the rest of the property. We're working with the county, also with our new, with our city attorney, trying to come up with a more elaborate plan, you know, to get rid of the about 30 or so properties that we have.
Is that the vacant lots, you mean?
Well, there's others, there's homes also.
Okay.
There's a lot of homes that we have as well. So right now with these homes, we're getting a lot of residents that are calling, like every week, I'm getting several calls a week from neighboring homes, from those three that we have on here for trying to get rid of those homes, so we can help the residents, and at the same time, put them on a tax base, you know, with somebody owning them, homeowner occupied. So that's one of the reasons we have to put these, put them on bid net, you know, we have, you'll see the bids that we had received for those three homes, and they went to the proper bidding on bid net, and they went to the controller's office as well.
Okay. Council Chair. Thank you very much.
I just have, I have a question for the mayor.
Okay, so let's wait on that one, just if you don't mind, until we get to 7A, if you don't mind. Okay, so anything else on agenda items?
You have one on Zoom.
Okay, Dana, go ahead.
Good evening, Council Chair.
Good evening.
And also women, and mayor. I wanted to address 7A also, the sale of city-owned residential properties. Last time this topic was discussed, I think about a year ago, it kind of became a political hot potato among some members of the council. Don't let this happen again tonight. I've been living in one of these city-owned properties, light properties, for over a decade and a half. It's 5666 Grinley Park. I'm sorry, I didn't say that, but on Grinley Park, Dearborn Heights. The previous homeowner failed to maintain the property, and the majority of the previous administration ignored the property as well. Now it's so broken down, dilapidated, that it's dangerous, the garage is falling down, rats, rabbits, all of the fleas, and the feces that you can imagine around there, grass and so forth, it's time to maintain everything, but it's just a mess. I reviewed the backup documents, and I saw the project went out to bid net.
Wait, Dana, Dana?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I always have to be the Zoom police, I guess. After you said, "I saw the property," and then you got cut off, so you got to start again, if you don't mind.
That's okay. I, yeah, I saw the...
The backup, I think you said, and now you got cut off. Now you got cut off again.
The previous, okay, the previous administration allowed the property to get out of, they ignored the property as well. It's dilapidated and dangerous now. I reviewed the backup documents, and I saw the project went out to bid net, I also went out to the bid net site and viewed their site. It's not difficult process, that I looked at the system and how the city's direction board followed, it's pretty easy to follow. If there's some questions tonight about a nonprofit, and if they wish to bid on the properties, and clearly they did not, then they missed their opportunity, a second such opportunity. Open bids are there for a specific reason, and bids are there for a specific reason. The bidder must meet all the criteria to bid. Remember, if you wish to change a home from a single-family family home to a shelter where people come and go, you need to at very least contact all the neighboring residents to garner their consent. You should also contact the police chief to ask about calls for service increases. I worked in a police department in Taylor, and I can tell you, we did have such a shelter in Taylor, and it does garner increased calls for service. So before you decide that you want to bring up a shelter, which I think is a wonderful idea, you got to decide that if you're going to do that, you got to do some thinking along the heart of all the residents who live around that, and decide, you need to contact these people who live with it, and are going to bid with it. Oh, it sounds great, let's set up a nonprofit. It sounds great, and I totally agree, it does sound great, and I like to do things for people as well, but you have to consider, people have to live next to and around that. And people come and people go, and that's, that garners some concerns and some problems, as well as the increased calls for service from police department. And trust me, it will increase calls for service, I can promise you that. If you don't believe me, contact your police department, ask them, they'll tell you the numbers of calls for service, it was on count, no. Thank you very much. If anyone has any questions, please ask.
No problem. Thank you very much, Dana, appreciate it, and I could attest, having been on the council for seven years now, your property's come up multiple times, and I'm glad it was put up on bid net, and hopefully we can find the right buyer that will take care of that property and have you live next door to a much better situation than you have now, because I can tell you, even as a Realtor, I, it was bad. So I appreciate that, thank you. Mr. Dishrun, just in case, if it's, in case it's on an agenda item, because this is a public comment section, if you don't mind, if we could go ahead and have you comment during the particular item, if you don't mind, is that okay?
If it was about 7A...
Okay, so I'll make sure you get the comment as soon as we start with 7A, no problem. Thank you very much, Director. Is there any other comments on Zoom? Okay, seen none, and nobody else here in the audience? Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead, go next, to fund transfers and current claims.
Councilor.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved current claims, 6-1 through 6-59, as submitted.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad and supported by Councilwoman Brier. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 7A, Mayor Bazey bid award, sale of city-owned residential properties.
Council Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the, that the city of Dearborn Heights Council award the bid for the sale of the city-owned properties to the following firms as the developers, 24714 Powers for $58,100, 5666 Grinley Park for $35,150, to HP Snap, 4693 Universal for $16,973.84, to FPJ Investments LLC, as outlined in 7A.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Coniston, supported by Councilman Badun. Any discussion on that? Council Chair. Councilman Badun, but just if you don't mind, because originally the director Dishrun, so I'm going to have him go first, and then you will go next, if you don't mind, please, just to continue with the alignment. Go ahead, Director Dishrun.
Thank you, Council Chair. Bill Dishrun, Director of Orders and Enforcement, Animal Control. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of the mayor and Mr. Parrish regarding these properties. I think it's important to get them rehabbed and get them in living condition as soon as possible. We've had some complaints about many of them, and I'd just like to see that move forward and get those in good hands.
Wait, after good hands, you got cut off, I'm sorry.
I just, I want to get them sold and get them into good hands, get them rehabbed, get them livable, and make them worth living in, and move on. That's my only comment.
Okay, thank you, Director.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director. Councilman Badun, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair, and my question is, maybe it can go to the mayor, it can go to our corporation counsel, or even a tenured council member, but I see that we put these on bid net, and I know we've had this concern on different things that, you know, individuals are bidding on. Why are we only going to bid now? Why are we not taking it to the animal list like other municipalities do? Why are we not taking it to...
The animal list, you said?
Yes.
It would not, yeah, they would not list them with Realtor, the way they have it.
Well, not with Realtor, I mean, why can't the city publicize it on social media, you know, just broaden our horizons, and, you know, because I personally think we've left some money on the table, and I get it, we have to get these sold quick, but some of these home homes, and as a Realtor, I'm sure, you know, we have two experts here that can tell you that this is a very good deal in a lot of these houses, regardless of the house condition, the property loans is worth it. You know, I'm going to support this, because I know that the urgency on this, but in the near future, how do you go about publicizing it a little bit more, so that it's open to more than just bid net?
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, you want to answer, or do you want me to have the controller answer?
No, I can answer it.
Okay.
So, we are, I am talking to various mayors from different cities to see how they handle their properties as well, so we're trying to check best practices, and I'm also talking to our attorney to see what we can do. The only thing is, what I'm trying to prevent, you know, a lot of residents, they complain, obviously, it's a legit complaints about, you know, slum lords in the city, they're having properties, you know, investors buying properties. We've had some early, you know, when I was on council, you know, we have some of the homes that were sold at that time, they were not maintained, you know, they were owned by this investor, and they never did put any money into the homes, and they let residents move right into it as renters. So one of the things that I'm trying to do is trying to make sure that we have something, so we have a program that I'm trying to finalize, and, you know, try to offer the homes to first responders, veterans, teachers, healthcare workers, but we're trying to get a program just to make sure it's fair, and trying to make sure, you know, try to encourage people to move into our city. So I'm working on different things right now, trying to see what we can do for the program. We have a lot of properties, so trying to make sure we figure out what's the best practice, trying to benchmark what other cities are doing, and try to make sure that we have something good for the city we can use from today moving forward.
I appreciate that, Mayor, and I thank you for putting this forward, and just, I think in the near future, some of these homes, like the one for $16,973, I think you could have easily sold it for $30,000 or $40,000, you know, moving forward.
I don't think so.
Okay.
They wanted to demolish these homes, and the...
If you don't mind, for the audience, please.
Guys, let's just, let's all keep it respectful, please.
I would like to add, Mr. Mayor, just in case, for those in the audience that are not familiar, or maybe on Zoom, these are properties that have gone on tax foreclosure, where the resident did not pay the taxes, and I'm talking about specifically property taxes, and the first right of refusal is always to the state of Michigan. After the state of Michigan, it comes to us as the city, which we have the first right of refusal as far as buying these properties, and then reselling them, and then after that, if we don't, they go to the county, and as I mentioned in previous council meetings, you know, with due respect to the county, we don't want it to go to the county, because when it goes to the county, then it goes into their land, like, not what's it called?
Land bank.
Land bank, yeah, it goes to the land bank, and then you got people buying these in bunches, where they buy every 40 properties or 80 properties at a time, and now we're stuck with, or possibly stuck with somebody that may not maintain it as well, may not do what needs to be done, and may not care what we think about them. So this is, this is in our favor for us to handle it, just want to point that out to the audience, for those that are not familiar with this.
And Council Chair, also, on top of it, so if they owe the city, let's say $6,000, or $10,000, just give a wrong number, they owe on a particular house $10,000 to the city, let's say we paid just to maintain the grass, snow, another $5,000, so if he sells it for $20,000, so the city gets $15,000, the county, as of right now, we're still trying to finalize, they said there's documentation to otherwise, but right now, the $5,000, whatever above what the city pays, goes to the county, it doesn't go to the city. So even if you sell it for $100,000, the city still gets their $15,000, and the county gets the rest. So that's something we're exploring to see what program that we can actually, if the city keeps all of it. Right now, at this point, right now, with these homes, the city will get whatever the cost is owed to the city, the administration cost, and also the maintenance cost, minus that, the rest goes to the county.
Yeah, and I want to point out on some of these, like, I'm familiar with the one, for example, on Universal, I'm very familiar with one on Universal, and the one on Grinley Park. These are not ones that need paint and carpet. These are, like the mayor said, I mean, they're just inches away from being a tear down, they're pretty bad, so they're not ones where you can spend $5,000 and just go ahead and sell it. They need major, major overhaul, and it's not fair to the residents, specifically, like, for example, Dana, I mean, I remember off the top of my head, seeing you in our council meetings, maybe five, six years ago, if not longer, where you were complaining, and I remember we seen pictures and videos of what's next door.
Is this the same house?
It's the same house, and it's just not fair for any resident, any resident, to live next door to that, not to mention that these homes unfortunately bring down the values of other homes in the area, and not to mention, when they're fixed up and resold and obviously reassessed, the city will be making more taxes on these properties, because they'll be assessed at a higher amount than what was previously capped, and therefore will be bringing in additional income. But again, no one, not you, not I, not no one, wants to live next door to a property like that, it's just not fair to the neighbors.
Council Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Just to echo what everybody's saying, these properties already have been abandoned for years, years and years. There was a problem with the city of Detroit 10 years ago or so, with investors, as the Council Chair mentioned, not buying houses in bundles, but, and then reselling them on another site, and so the buyer sees a picture of a house, let's say, in a great area of the city of Detroit, and that house getting sold for $70,000, $80,000, $100,000 by out-of-state buyer, and so the home goes through the mill and ends up, and one of the requirements, if anybody buys a tax foreclosure, is that they not run it out for so many years that they do A, B, and C, so that, and for so many years, it doesn't end up back on the tax roll.
Right. Any other comments on this item?
Tax foreclosure rule.
Right. Any other... Council Chair. Yes, Councilman Winsell.
Thank you. You know, the mayor referred to these properties as the emergency sales, and as we heard in the last few minutes, that some of these have been owned by the city for a number of years, as long as 10 years, without it being an emergency, without some emergency all of a sudden, and the mayor also referred to these as good homes, it just needed a little TLC, and then Councilman Badun said if we can give more money, they said, well, they're getting ready to be torn down. I don't know what you, either need a little bit TLC, or they're getting ready to be torn down, but I'm not sure, we're kind of confusing there. Now, these are, are these where these investors buy these homes, fix them up, and they have to sell them to a family or a person to live in the house, is that correct?
Like our resident.
Like we did before?
That's the intentions, yes.
Is that in, is that in this packet? Is this the packet we got?
We got your updated contract, and that's what it's going to say.
Excuse me, go through the chair, please. Okay, I'm talking, thank you.
All right. I thought you asked me a question.
Okay, is this owner, homeowner occupied contract with these three companies?
So once they get the particular bid, whoever happens to get the bid, once we do the vote, let's say, you know, anybody, whoever, not a councilman, whoever, yeah, not Mo, whoever happens to get it.
Vince.
Then at that point, yeah, Vince, let's say, then at that particular point, our corporation counsel will draft a contract, and there'll be a contract signed between whoever gets the bid and the city, and that's where the stipulations will be in there as far as what stipulations that we have, or corporation counsel recommends. Okay, and... And it has been talked about many, many years, that it be owner occupied. The primary reason behind that...
Yeah, that's good, so they don't rent it out.
Yeah, it's not so much anti-renters, I'm going to tell you the thought process behind that. So when somebody buys an investment property at a very cheap price, and intends on just leasing it out, it's much easier to lease it out than to flip it and make a profit. So what they do is they just barely fix it, they put on a little, where they lipstick on a pig, and then it's much easier to go ahead and rent it out versus fixing it up and making it look nice and pretty in order for them to be able to get the maximum profit, which works in the city's best interest, in that, A, higher tax base, but most importantly, for the particular residents on that same block, they don't have blight in their neighborhood. And I'm going to tell you something, I forgot to mention, a major problem, like, for example, in Dana's home, and that's the home that I'm most familiar with, just because I've seen it for so many years, I mean, he had a major rat, not because of his house, I drove by his house, his house is very nice, very clean, very well-kept. The house next door, I didn't personally see it, but I've seen him in pictures in the past, he had, they had a major rat problem and rat issues. I'm surprised there is not even other type of funny animals around that property because of how badly it had been let go. So yes, they are, in my opinion, from what I've seen myself personally, in very, at least Universal, in extremely bad shape.
And thank you, because I know we dealt with one of these companies before, and they did a really fine job on their homes that they remodeled. It was stated in a letter from the, from the Bazey, that they had three bids, but I went on bid net, and I'm not sure, there's 10 bidders or 10 companies on this list that showed up on bid net. I don't know if they didn't meet the qualification, I wasn't sure, it was kind of confusing what they are, they didn't meet, the mayor...
So, okay, I don't know what you're referencing, I mean, do you mind, I don't know what this says specifically, so, I can request this, okay, do you mind if I hand it to the mayor?
Yeah, sure, yeah, I'm just curious, I just went on bid net, and it wasn't, it wasn't as easy as Dana Parrish said, I was kind of, you know, unless you're computer-savvy, it's a little tricky to get through that, navigate through that bid net.
Okay.
And then, okay.
The only thing I can answer on bid net is, and I'm talking about bid net, I'm not talking about this specific situation, is the reason a lot of cities go on bid net is it's the most fair process, okay, where everybody has an opportunity, it is not being advantageous to one person or another. And I'm talking about in general terms, in terms of this list, I don't know, the mayor can probably answer that.
Council Chair, I mean, like what Councilman Badun said, you know, a lot of people weren't aware of these, and I was contacted by one, and I'm sure there's several out there, but one thing that was brought to my attention is the FPJ Investments. I got some paperwork on that company, and it shows Matthew Shank as the owner or part of the company. I don't know if that's a conflict of interest or not, but you can pass that down.
Who is that?
Matthew Shank.
Attorney.
Does he work for the city?
Yes. Okay, so let me, okay, so I just want to make sure I understand your question, your question is in regards to Matthew Shank.
Well, it's, yeah, I was wondering if there was a conflict of interest.
Okay, and in regards to the 10 people that bid, right?
Well, I don't know if there were bidders, but it came up as they were bidders, yeah.
Right, I just want to make sure you don't...
That's the way I took it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you don't with your question, so the mayor can answer this question. Oh, thank you.
What is this?
That's the Matthew Shank. Pass it down.
Can I give one to the mayor?
Yes, please. Okay, do you want me to go ahead and answer those now?
Yeah, I mean, I, this company, this FPJ company, back a couple years ago, it was invest, it was probable investigation by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I was looked in, tried to look into, see what the results of the case were, but I couldn't find it, but they, there is, there's something that was put in my mailbox, and I was just informed that right before the meeting, there was more of these put in everyone's mailbox, it's a story.
I know you mentioned some, I spoke to you earlier today.
I didn't get that. They just said they just did it right before the meeting, so...
Right, and I checked with others, well, I checked with Councilman Ahmad, Councilman Badun, and Councilwoman Brier, and myself, I didn't have nothing in my mailbox, so I just, that's why.
Yeah, you know, I'm 100%, because that's all it can be, it can't be 110%, I'm 100% in favor of getting, selling these homes and refurbishing them, because we've had good success in the past.
Correct.
I just had some red flags brought up, and I was just curious on, you know, the situation.
No problem.
As far as conflict of interest possibly, or even why, you know, what happened to these other 10 people that...
Okay, and let me have the mayor, mayor, do you want to answer that, or go ahead?
So I just talked to our controller, the only packages that we got with the checks are the three that we have listed on a tabulation sheet. Those are the only three, that when you submit, obviously, you know, you can go on bid net, but it doesn't mean that if they don't submit a package, you know, we can't put them on a tabulation sheet. So the only three that were submitted are the ones that we have on the tabulation sheet with a check. Council Chair.
Okay, so that's what they did, they, they're the ones that put down the $1,000, whatever it's called.
Probably the deposit.
Yeah, deposit, okay, yeah, I seen that on there, and we said that there's only...
So it sounds to me, madam, if you're my madam controller, I'm sorry to bother you, so I just want to make sure the councilman gets his question answered, and I'll ask clarification for myself. So it sounds to me like 10 people started the process, but only through, continued all the way to the end, including putting in the bid and turning in the package, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then the second question, Mayor, in regards to Matthew Shank, the attorney.
What is that?
Doesn't say he's an owner. I'm sorry, what is his role? Is he one of the bidders?
No, he's saying that it's conflict of interest.
Because he's one of the bidders?
No, he's not even a bidder.
He's saying the attorney is involved with FPJ Investments LLC, but do you know in what capacity, Councilman?
No, I just, this just came up when I Googled the FPJ Investments, this is one of the things that...
So you're saying he had represented them at one time?
His name came up as the resident mailing address for this company.
Of FPJ?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Corporation Council, just to clarify what the councilman's saying, he's saying when he Googled the company, the name came up, Matthew Shank, which is Attorney Matthew Shank, who's currently involved with the city, that's what he's asking. He's saying, is that a conflict of interest?
Council Chair.
Wait, one second.
If it's an agent here, I, I got an email that he used to represent the city, doesn't currently represent the city council.
Okay.
So I don't know how long ago, I don't have the information on, you know, nothing's provided with this document.
He currently, as far as I know at least, unless the mayor can tell me otherwise, he does not currently represent the city, no. I know he, he had some affiliation in the past.
No, you, you guys passed a resolution a couple of years ago or so, a year and a half, about a year and a half or so that you guys removed him.
Right. Does that answer your question, Councilman?
Well, I, I guess, I mean, he doesn't represent any entity of the city whatsoever, a person or anything, I mean.
Mayor's saying no.
Okay.
I'm not aware of him representing them right now, I'm familiar with the name.
Well, I just wanted, you know, I don't want some other person that bid on this or something and say, you know, hey, you know, this guy shouldn't have had the opportunity to bid.
I, I, I personally don't see that as a conflict of interest, and I'm just speaking myself personally, because if, if an attorney worked for the city and is no longer working for the city for the last year and a half, so there's no affiliation, to me personally, I've got no problem with it. I, I don't see that as a conflict of interest. Is there, do they, does he, does he know people in the city? Probably, but that doesn't make it necessarily a conflict of interest.
And I also, like I said, I, when I Googled it, this Detroit Free Press story came up about the investigation from Housing and Urban Development from the FPJ Investments.
Okay. I, I just want to point out something in the contracts. When the contracts are finally written, and I'm not basing it on the future, because I, I'm not involved with the contract directly, obviously, this would be something the Corporation Council put together, but in the past, obviously, once they put their deposit and they put up the money, in the past, and I presume it's going to be the same way again, presumptively, they have a certain time limit to finish this stuff, so it's not like they could, anybody, we're not just referencing Matthew Shank, anybody. It's not like somebody can purchase the property and take four years to finish it, they don't have that option.
Right.
Because in the past, we'd be able, as a city, be able to take that property back. I'd, I'd, I'd like, since we're on that subject, I'd like the city attorney and the mayor's administration to make sure that that's the case again, because that's the way it was in the past, where they didn't have a freehold. So with that being the case, as long as they finish it within a lot of months, and it's to the city's satisfaction, the building safety's satisfaction, and they are selling it to property owner.
It has to be owner occupied.
Owner occupied, yeah.
But who, doesn't the corporation, I'm so sorry to interrupt.
That's okay, go ahead.
Don't we have to see the contract, or, or can we just put on a motion to say that this has to be? Because at the end of the day, nothing against renters, but I don't think anybody wants another renter that has left the house abandoned to be able to move into the neighborhood. That's just, you know, for what it is, so. Can the mo, because nothing here in the motion states that it has to be sold as an owner occupied.
That's usually a part of the contract.
Yeah, it is. It is, Council Chair.
Yes, the mayor's saying it is.
We even asked to put that in the deed.
Okay.
As well as a period of time to clean the property up within six months, get it ready to go.
Even twelve months, it's fine, I mean.
We kept it at six months.
Six months should be plenty enough. So mostly these companies that bid are usually the type that can knock it out pretty quickly.
Council Chair, are, are we going to be approving that contract, or is that administrative approval?
It's administrative, I don't know if they're bringing it back to us, I presume they are. I, I'm not sure, mayor?
No, it's administrative.
Okay.
But, but we'll send it to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this? All right, hearing none. Motion made by Councilman Constant and seconded by Councilman Badun. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please.
Dave Abdullah?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Moby Dune?
Yes.
Nancy Brier?
Yes.
Robert Constant?
Yes.
And Tom Wenzel?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Five, one.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Clerk, motion carried. Next item on agenda is item nine A from City Officials. First item, Chief of Staff Hernandez, National Opiod Settlement Year One Payment Allocation.
Council Chair.
Councilman Constant?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve and accept the year one payment allocation to the City of Dearborn Heights in the amount of seven thousand, three, seven thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents, in addition to authorize Chief of Staff Mariana Hernandez as the authorized official to submit the payment election forms on behalf of the city as outlined in nine A.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constant and seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Constant, go ahead.
Briefly, so the, the city and the whole state of Michigan, any of these national class actions, when I was in the legislature, it was the big tobacco settlement. The tobacco companies all had to pay millions of dollars in what became what was called the Twenty-First Century Jobs Fund. The Detroit Diesel Complex was, Andy Dillon was then a state rep. The state of Michigan took, you know, like, like factoring, all the money at once, so they were entitled to receive so much money every year, they discounted it, and it was with that that they built Detroit Diesel. So excellent job that with this payment on the national opioid class action settlement.
Good, thank you. Any other discussion items? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item nine B, City Engineer Debe Wayne County Drain Commission Sewer Crossing Agreements.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Brier, please.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the Wayne County Drain Commissioner Crosser Agreement Lefler Storm Drain, Storm Drain, L zero six six, the Wayne County Commissioner Crossing Agreement Lefler Ready Sanitary Drain, L zero six seven, and future similar agreements on behalf of the city as outlined in nine B.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Brier and supported by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item nine C, City Engineer Debe, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one Water Main Replacement Program Change Order Number Two.
Council Chair.
Councilman Badun?
Uh, what is this, nine's?
Nine C.
Nine C.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one Water Main Replacement Program Change Order Number Two for a total increase of forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants on behalf of the city and the treasurer to issue payment from account number five nine two five three seven, nine A one point zero zero six, as outlined in nine C.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Badun and supported by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Uh, Councilman Badun?
Uh, this was Mr. Debe, correct?
Yes.
Uh, can he just give me a quick breakdown? I know this was a huge packet, uh, and just maybe just a quick synopsis, as I know the council chair loves to say, a quick two-minute synopsis.
Uh, and while, while you're doing that, my question on this, so you could answer maybe both together, Mr. Debe, I noticed there was two change orders, and this thing started originally back in two thousand and twenty-one.
Yep.
I'm sorry, that was, yep, in two thousand twenty-one. And then there was two change orders. That honestly concerned me a little bit, A, why there was two change orders, and then B, why such a prolonged time before we started this program? So if you can answer both questions together.
So, so it is a multi-year contract, so that's, that, that will answer the prolonged time. And then the quantities, like for this particular change order was a simple, it was an estimated quantity during construction, there are two methods of, it is on, isn't it?
Okay.
So there are two different methods of installing the pipes, whether it's directional drilling or pipe bursting. Each one costs different, I mean, the cost is, is not the same. During construction, if one method is, if you weren't able to do directional for whatever reason, I, in this case, too close to utilities, it was dangerous. But the good part is that the, we use the bid prices from the initial bid, so it's not like the contractor will write his own check during, if changes happen during the work. You, you hold them back to the unit price that was done during the bid. So if the unit price was ten dollars, that's all he gets, is ten dollars for the extra. So it's not like, you know, the change orders cost not, we did estimate, it was estimated during design and construction, things sometimes don't match.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, Councilman?
So that's, that was the cause of the.
I, I wasn't concerned about that, I, I follow you blindly.
No, no, I mean, that, that, we, we, we don't just take the contractor's word for it.
No, my question, can you give a quick synopsis of what this is?
Yeah, so this, this, the quantity for directional drilling versus the quantity, so there were X number of feet for directional drain bid at X, and then you have pipe bursting, which was bid for, you know, different price. During construction, the quantities were not the same, so the field conditions were not the same as the design, so they were too close. In this instance, I believe gas line was closer in the field than anticipated, so the records were not as accurate. And so we were, you, you don't want a, a pipe burst near a gas line, so you go to different method. And then the, you, you figure the quantity, and then you hold the contractor to the original price, and then you, you modify the contract. So it is, it is just variations in the field.
And my last question, Council Chair.
Sure.
Monsieur Debe, this is us being proactive, correct?
Absolutely.
So this, and so this is not like something is already caused, this is us preventing something from happening, so we're taking these steps.
Right, so you, when things are, when, when things vary in the field, you, you, you react accordingly. And so, but you, you know, what you don't want to do is hold the contract quantities fixed, because then in the field, when things change, the contractor can write his own check, because you can't go out to bid, because you're already in construction, right? So what you do is you have unit prices, which is what we currently do on everything, even the pavement. We do unit prices, that, that's what you charge per square yard or per linear foot. And if things, if you add something or you deduct something, you just use the unit prices from the original bid to adjust up or down, so you're, you're not being taken advantage of.
Thank you, Council.
Yes.
Council Chair. Councilman Wenzel, go ahead.
So, the difference is the, the amount of work that had to be done, not price increases for material or anything like that. So it's just that there's, there was extra work that wasn't anticipated. Now, you, you know, you mentioned the horizontal joint, this is a two million dollar contract, you know, and, but that's pretty interesting, horizontal joint opposed to pipe bursting.
Right.
I mean, I'm sure people out there have no idea what that is. Can you really quick tell them what that means, that is?
So pipe bursting, you actually put an, a auger inside an existing pipe. So let's say it's a six-incher, you put an auger in, and then you, you burst it from the inside out, and you use that path to put a larger pipe in. That's one way to do it. So you're not open cut, you're not going to excavate, tear it down, you're just going in. Directional drilling is different, you just put a, a well in one location, and a well in another location, and the machine will drill from one to another, and you just pull the pipe through.
Which is more expensive?
Uh, directional.
Is it? Yeah. Thank you so much, it's interesting.
It's a lot cheaper than a, a open cut, so you try to avoid open cuts, so if you're crossing Joy Road, you're not tearing down the pavement and rebuilding it and all that stuff. If you, try to avoid it if we can.
Okay. Any other questions from council members? Hearing none. Motion made by Councilman Badun and seconded by Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item nine D, City Engineer Debe Oversight of Street Repair Work.
Council Chair.
Councilman Constant?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the use of Wade trim personnel for construction material testing and field oversight during the concrete slab replacement work done throughout the city by Hard Rock Construction Company, where total cost knocked to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars or 3.2% of construction. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants on behalf of the city and the treasurer to issue payment per the original scope and fee out of account two oh two dash two oh two dash eight eight oh point five zero zero as outlined in nine D.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Councilman Constant and seconded by Councilman Badun. Any discussion on that? I just had a quick question for you, Director. The 3.2%, is that pretty much par, as far as, in the industry?
Usually it's 5%.
Yeah, okay.
So this is, this is less, and, and the reason for that is.
No, no, I don't either, I, I'm.
No, we cut it down. We cut it down, so it's not a full-time onsite, we just negotiated a separate, so it's part-time, it's when, as needed, and we're holding them to, it's usually 5%.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Director, so, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Comptroller King, Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-One Audit Report.
Council Chair.
Councilman Badun?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council receive, know, and file the audit report of fiscal year two thousand twenty-one as outlined in nine E.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Badun and supported by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion on that?
Um, I had questions for the comptroller, please. I hate to make you get up every time. Now, on pages six and seven, okay, um, you see a lot of different programs that were not passed through to the subscribe, to the subscribers. Was there any particular reason for that? Especially some of these, if you look at them, like, let me give an example, program year two thousand fifteen, there was a, that year's expenditure says ten thousand nine hundred and ninety-six, or at least current year expenditures, but then it doesn't say passed through, like the item way on the bottom, which is America Firefighters Grant Equipment, which was 1.6 million, or is that COVID? I'm sorry, COVID. Yep, the COVID, nope, I'm sorry, America Firefighters Grant Equipment, which is 1.63 million. Why is it that some of these didn't pass through? Can you explain that a little bit, if you don't mind?
I'm not sure what you're looking at. Yes, please.
So, and you could take this with you if you'd like. So if you notice here, current year, and then they didn't pass through on all these different expenditures.
Uh, so can I just, that's how we, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I get back to you?
No, it's okay. All right, um, let me see if there's any, while there was that, and then on page seven and eight, it was the same thing, also did not pass through to the subscribers.
Can I have to get back to you, because I?
Okay, so then, question for you. Would it be very problematic then if we tabled that until we get the answers to these?
We could definitely take that.
Okay. So I'll see if there's any other questions on this item. No other questions? Okay, uh, the person that made the motion on this particular one was Councilman Bedun. If you're okay with that, you'd have to amend your motion to table that. If you, if the gentleman and the councilwoman would like to table that.
Council Chair. I refer back to the administration.
Okay.
Council Chair, and just to kind of, you know, so I, I, I can see your concerns, but what does this change?
Well, it's not changing, but it just got to be, my bigger concern, honestly, that there's a lot of allocated funds that have not been spent yet. So I just want to make sure and clarify that that's not the case.
Well, we can always amend the budget, can't we?
It, it, to me, I'd rather have the answers before I can vote on it, for me personally. So it's up to you guys. Any gains?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can.
Wait, may I move up to the mic?
Sorry. Uh, receive note and file the audit, and then, because, you know, the audit's done, and then.
Right.
Yeah, then we can just have her bring.
Get the explanation.
For me, personally, I'd rather have it go back to administration. I'd rather get the answers to this, it'd make me feel more comfortable. But that's for me, it's up to you, all of you. So I just want to get a little bit of a heads up.
I'm in support of tabling it, Council Chair.
So going back to administration, getting the answers, and then we'll put on next agenda. I, uh, Councilman Wensel, you okay with that?
Yes.
You okay with that?
I'm okay. Yes.
Okay. So go ahead, change your motion then. Uh, send it back to administration.
I, I rescind my, uh, current motion, Council Chair, and then, uh, I'm going to ask that we table this and send back, or not table this, but rescind this back to the, refer back to the administration.
Support.
Okay, so motion made by Councilman Bedun and supported, well, it was originally supported by Councilman Conston. Madam Clerk, does that have to be the same person supporting it? Okay. Supported by Councilman Ahmad. Any other discussion items on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9F, Comptroller King Budget Amendments, General Fund and Water/Sewer Operating Fund Debt Payments.
Council Chair.
Councilman Conston?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council amend the fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2023, general fund and water and sewer operating budgets as follows. A, fund increase in water and sewer fund account number 592-537-981-006, dash A, period A, Trail Highland Water Main in the amount of $197,107. B, funding increase in the water sewer fund account 592-540-981-000, capital outlay in the amount of $18,000, uh, $18,040, and fund decrease in the water and sewer fund account number 592-540-818.040. Construction service lining in the amount of $18,040 is outlined in 9F.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Conston, seconded by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad?
I do have a question. If we go part B, you were amending the budget for an item we're, we still didn't even approve yet, which is linked to, uh, uh, nine, uh, nine G about the street sweeper. So we're amending, amending the budget before even approving, uh, increasing the budget for the sweeper. Is that possible, or?
Okay. Do you understand the question, Comptroller?
So we're amending the budget to increase, uh, for the sweeper. We're increasing the budget for the sweeper, even though we even approved the sweeper yet.
You haven't approved the sweeper?
We approved the sweeper, it's the price increase.
Yeah, correct.
So you approved the price increase for the sweeper?
We're like approving B before approving A, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so the sweeper needs to be approved first? And then we need to amend the budget for that amount?
So can we, can we bond this, or can?
Well, we could switch them off, if that's what you, for. Is that okay, Madam Clerk? So basically, we're going to flip-flop, um, item, uh, 9F and 9G.
9G. Council Chair.
Just one sec, let's see if the Madam Clerk is okay with that. Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and go to item 9G, but before we do, Councilman Conston? I'm all set. All set? Okay. All right, so we'll start new with 9G. Somebody making the motion and somebody seconding?
Council Chair.
We're going to suspend the rules.
We're going to suspend it, yeah, let's go ahead and vote on suspending the rules.
Council Chair.
Councilman Conston?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the.
I'm sorry, give me a second. You got to do the motion on suspending the rules first.
Uh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Council Chair, call for a vote. Or I, I move that we suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Conston to suspend the rules, seconded by Councilman Bedun. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair. Uh, item 9G, a little change on the agenda, that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the payment increase of $18,044 for the 2022 Elgin Brew Bear Street Sweeper, originally authorized by City Council Motion 21-474. This amount to be paid from account 592-540-981-000 is outlined in 9G.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Conston and supported by, seconded by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad?
So I have a question for Director Conrad. I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't able to reach him on time. So this thing was approved last year. So what's the reason it wasn't purchased last year? Now we have to pay another $18,000 for it?
Robert Conrad, Director for DPW. Um, it's just the environment we're in, where it takes you 18 months to receive a piece of equipment that you purchased 18 months ago. There is a supply issue for just about everything, and our equipment isn't, you know, is, is subject to that too. So, I mean, these price increases are a result of not being able to buy a piece of equipment when you, you say you're going to buy it. I mean, in years past, you know, you would put in an order for a piece of equipment, and you'd get it two, three months later. You'd be subject to the same prices that you agreed to purchase the equipment. But with the environment we're in, where, you know, everything is in a supply chain, you know, squeeze, we're buying things from MyDeal and Sourcewell, this was a Sourcewell purchase, um, we're subject to price increases at the time of delivery with these Sourcewell government contracts, so.
Basically, you're saying it's not a delay on our end, it's a delay from the supplier?
Exactly. I mean, we've had our order, I mean, and we still have, I don't know if anybody recalls, we still have a dump truck out there that we haven't received either. We're going to probably see the same result, you know, and I'm not going to bring that issue up until we get it, because who knows? I might not get it till the next budget. So, you know, um, it's, it, it's frustrating, but it's, you know, what everybody has to deal with, with the supply chain problem.
Same situation as what's happening with cars, when you're trying to buy new cars. Very similar situation.
So my second question is, do we have a schedule for sweeping the roads? I mean, I only saw them one time this summer, I'm not sure.
So, I mean, we swept the roads in the spring, twice, and then we've swept on an as-needed basis. Um, if we see something dirty, or get a request from somebody to, to sweep something. We've been trying to concentrate on trees and tree removal. So, I mean, you know, I, in past years, um, they would go out and sweep clean streets. Or, that was a tough one to say, sweep clean streets. Um, and I don't think that's a prudent use of our resources when we have so many other problems in a city, one being tree trimming and tree removal. So, um, you know, we're, we swept the streets in the spring, you know, if we did get any requests for dirty streets, we'd go out and look at them. If we determined that they were, you know, worthy of the street sweeper going through, we'd send them out on their trash day and sweep those areas. But, um, you know, we didn't do that bi-weekly, or, you know, every three weeks, like it had been done in the past, because it's just not a good use of our resources. You know, and then we'll be going through in the fall and doing our fall cleanups, so you'll see them again. So, um, right now, we're working on a spring-fall type sweeping program.
So since we haven't been using the sweepers that much, do you think we are in need to buy another one right now?
Oh, yeah.
You are?
Um, I mean, we have two very reliable sweepers, but they're both five years old, and they are, you know, showing some, some age to them. And we do have them both, you know, we're servicing them, both of them now. Um, the, the other one is, I'm not sure the exact age of that one, but it is older. So, I mean, you know, um, it, it's a rough environment that the sweepers work in, and it is, you know, prudent to, you know, keep that in a rotating basis. The one that we're replacing it with, we were probably spending more money than it was worth to keep it going, so I'm not putting any more money into the, to, to our fourth sweeper that this one's going to be replacing.
So if the council approves this today, when do you anticipate the delivery of the machine?
It, it's here now, I'm just, it's in our garage, I haven't used it until you guys approve it. Um, you know, we didn't, we don't know what the price increase is going to be until they deliver it. So, um, if, if you don't approve it, the.
So you're saying it's already been delivered?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
This is the price now, or there's going to be a change again?
No. No, this is, this is the price. We have the broom in our shop, we haven't used it, because I'm waiting for your approval on the price increase. If you don't approve it, the vendor who supplied the broom says he's got nine other municipalities that are willing to snatch it up in a heartbeat.
And you mentioned there's a fall cleanup, so you're saying it's going to be one-time sweep now in the fall?
It, this, I mean, it depends on when we get to them. I mean, we want to get the streets as clean as possible before winter, so it makes our snow removal, you know.
Easier?
Easier and, and, and a better product. But, um, you know, one, two, three sweeps, I guess it depends on the area. I mean, we're not going to go out and sweep something that, that doesn't need sweeping. We'll definitely concentrate on areas that need sweeping. So, you know, that's the job of my supervisors to properly deploy the resources where they're most warranted.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Council Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Council Chair. Councilman Wensel? Director?
Director. Um, at a, at a, a previous meeting, uh, the street sweeping was brought up, and a gentleman asked if it's a vacuum truck also, and the vacuum street. And I looked at the, the list of criteria, or the list of options, or whatever, for this. It doesn't say anything about a vacuum, but I'm assuming it's, it's a vacuum, it's not a vacu-
No, it's not a vacu-
What happens to the dirt?
It, it goes, I mean, it's a mechanical, it, so there's a broom in the back, the rotating one. It throws dirt onto a flight chain, which takes it up and dumps it into a hopper. So, I mean, it's, it, it's the way sweeping's been done for many years. I mean, the vacuum brooms are, um, just another option. They're usually noisier, more mechanically a problem.
We have some, don't we?
We have one, we have one vacuum broom, yeah.
So these, these, this model here, is it just as efficient as a vacuum for leaf cleaning?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, probably more so, because it can pick up heavier debris. So the vacuums don't pick up real very heavy, but they have a little, much smaller broom head, and they don't pick up big items very well.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Director, for many years, I've asked for this, I just want to make sure we're on the same page, to continue to put on the city website when you go through a particular street, so that this way residents can check either, A, when you're going to go on a particular street, it'd be the most ideal, because then they could prepare with their cars, which they're supposed to have out anyways during garbage days, because I know they only do it during garbage days. But at least put on the website which streets you've done, because residents continuously say, "My street's never been swept." And sometimes it could be a case where they just didn't see it, they just happened to not be there. But if you don't mind, please continue to monitor that, and continue to make sure that that information is put up on the website.
It's, uh, just a, a verbal form?
Just anything to where a resident can go check when their street was swept last.
Okay. I'll look into that.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, so. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman, go ahead.
I'm, I'm wondering, I've talked to Mr. Muscat, and we have an issue with the fact that, uh, all these prices change. And when I had a class in, in law school, um, when you have a contract, whatever's between the four corners, what's in between is, is what you abide by. And I don't understand how you can invalidate it and add more money in there.
Because we're buying things on MyDeal and Sourcewell contracts, which is a government contract, and those contracts are written in such a way that you're subject to current prices at the time when they purchase the different pieces and parts to put these vehicles together. So, um.
The COVID era.
I, I, I mean, you know, they, they can't, they, they're not, you know, they're not able to acquire all the materials at the time when, you know, they put their, their price in. So, you know, they can only buy the materials when they become available, and those prices are changing. So, I mean, that's why, you know, there's these price increases, because at the time when they assemble the vehicles, that's the price that they have to pay for the parts. So, I mean, you know, typically, I think if you're going to build something, you go out and you, you know, you put in your orders for all your parts, and you lock in those prices. When you're building or buying a piece of equipment like this, they don't have that ability to put in their orders, lock in their prices on these parts, and then wait 18 months for them to be delivered to them, to, to assemble the vehicle. So, you know, uh, I mean, I'm just operating within the means of the, you know, agreement we agreed to buy this piece of equipment under.
Council Chair.
Okay, I, I do want to point out, though, these prices are still better than what Joe Publican, I mean, not that Joe Public would buy this type of equipment, but hypothetically, as to what they could buy on the street. So these prices via the Michigan bidding process is negotiated either statewide or countywide with the best prices.
Right.
That you can't get on the street.
Right, and, and I think Sourcewell here is a nationwide, so that should be even a better price than MyDeal, because it's a nationwide bidding process.
And just to kind of echo our, um, our director here, you know, if you look in, I mean, this is a nationwide shortage when it comes to automotive. Uh, you know, I got friends that are in the industry, and they're telling us, literally, they're waiting years to get, to get certain equipments for vehicles. So I, I understand what's happening, and then I can only understand with, you know, after COVID, people don't want to work, and so people are forced to give more money so that people can come back to work. I mean, there's just so much that is going on, and so I completely understand. I believe in it, I ordered an expedition, and they just canceled it. They said they're not, they can't even, they, they don't have enough employees, they don't have enough, uh, equipment to finish out the 2022 year, so they're just going to move straight to 2023. I, I completely understand that, and so for those who are concerned, this is a nationwide shortage, it's not just Dearborn Heights or anybody else for that matter.
All right. Okay. Any other comments or concerns? Okay, so motion made by Councilman Conston and seconded by Councilman Bedun. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, now we've flipped these around again. Uh, so this is back to Comptroller King Budget Amendments, General Fund, Water and Sewer Operating Fund Debt Payments. And this will be, Councilman Conston, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council amend the fiscal year 2022, 2023, general fund, water and sewer operating budgets as follows. A, funding increase in the water sewer fund account 592-537-981-006, dash AA, Trail Highland Water Main in the amount of $197,000, $197,107. B, funding increase in water sewer fund account 592-540-981-000, capital outlay in the amount of $18,040. And C, funding in decrease in water and sewer fund account number 592-540-818.040, contract service lining in the amount of $18,040 is outlined in 9F.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Conston and seconded by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is, uh, DPW Director Conrad, oh, I'm sorry, we did that one.
H.
Next, uh, item on the agenda is item 9H, Police Chief Hart, 2022 Justice Assistance Grant, otherwise known as JAG.
Council Chair.
You know what, one of them can have it.
Well, I'm going to go with ladies first.
Ladies first.
Councilwoman Breyer.
Everybody wants to be in support of our police.
I'd like to make the motion that the City, Dearborn Heights City Council accept the U.S. Department of Justice Grant, 2022 Justice Grant, JAG, in the amount of $17,609.50, and authorize the mayor to sign the required documentation on behalf of the city as outlined in 9H.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, supported by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on this?
Lot of money coming in.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9I, Police Chief Hart Payment, Celebrite Forensic Mobile Device Examiner.
Council Chair.
Councilman Conston?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the annual payment to Celebrite Inc. for the forensic mobile device examiner at a cost of $4,880, which includes service and software updates. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or the clerk to sign the necessary warrants on behalf of the city and the treasurer to issue payment out of account 101-300-818-000 as outlined in 9I.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Conston, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on this? Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman, go ahead.
Yeah, this, this item, is this the, Chief, is this the license plater, license play reader? No? What, what is this?
Forensic Mobile Device Examiner. If you want to use the software.
If I can lean in far enough here, this, uh, this equipment allows our investigators to look at various, um, electronic equipment for forensic investigations. So most of us have very powerful, uh, smartphones in our pockets right now, and this allows investigators to dig deep into the forensic, uh, digital data within there to, uh, put, assist with investigations.
I'm no attorney.
Wait. Make sure he's done. Are you outside, Councilman?
Yeah, yeah, I'll talk to him.
Okay. Councilman Baydun, go ahead.
No, I'm open.
We know you're not an attorney.
All right. So, motion made by Councilman Conston and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is under ordinances and resolutions, amendment to the temporary food uses and licenses at specific locations resolution.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Baydun?
I also want you to add that this was your resolution.
Okay. Council Chairman Abdallah's resolution, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. And this is, you know, this is the stepping stone, but here it is. The Dearborn Heights City Council amends the resolution regarding the city council-approved process of temporary food license at special locations previously adopted, motion 22-121, to extend temporary permission from a period of 45 days to 180 days. This will also extend to those vendors that have been issued a license within the last 180 days and would expire 180 days from the day the original insurance or renewal is outlined in 11A.
Seconded.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Baydun and seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on that?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad?
So, my question is, what's the next step now from here?
So, I've been working on it, so I'll tell you the answer to this one. So, basically, this particular point was an ordinance, putting together an ordinance. But there was some concerns from Madam Clerk and then the different departments, just to make sure that if we do put together an ordinance, we don't want to rush an ordinance. So, instead, we continue with the resolution at this particular point. And I do want to point out to the general public, I know sometimes people, when we originally put this motion together, a lot of people were concerned, oh, my God, we're going to have, you know, a million food trucks and take away business from this restaurant and that restaurant, whatever. Just so that, you know, I checked with the Madam Clerk a few days back, there's right now currently one, one active food truck license in the city. That's it.
That's 11 miles long?
That's one on Telegraph and Ford Road. So, it is not something that's going to, like people perceive, is going to affect different restaurants and what have you. Meanwhile, though, the different directors, the clerk, ourselves, the mayor's administration will be getting together in continuous meetings on this, just to make sure whatever ordinance we put in place is smooth and has the best practices in place and no issues. What we didn't want to do is launch an ordinance and then come back and change the ordinance with different issues. So, this will prolong this for 180 days instead of just 45 days, which was honestly quite problematic for different departments in our city because a couple of food trucks, and their licenses have expired, they had applied during Ramadan, but they'd apply for a license, and it'd only be good for 45 days, they'd go through all different processes, have their food truck up and running, and then, you know, 20 days later, their 45 days are over. So, I commend the Madam Clerk for coming to me and letting me know this was starting to be problematic, and then we switched it around to be for 180 days until we get the formal ordinance put together. I don't know if that answers your question?
Thank you, Councilor Chair.
Okay. So, motion made by Councilman...
Councilor Chair.
I'm sorry, Councilman, go ahead.
I can understand you, it could be problematic, but we only have one, one truck, so, I mean, right now it can't be that difficult. But I read this over, and I was, does this, you have to have approval by the Wayne County Health Department to get a license from the city?
Correct.
Does this have to be renewed any time during that 180 days?
That would be a building department question. Because they have to submit that to the building department.
Rick is on there.
I can actually answer that.
Well, let's just, I'd rather have Rick. I'll allow you to comment on that.
There you go.
Director...
Where'd he go?
Rick, Watland, go ahead.
Oh, there he is.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. The Health Department gives them for one year, so that 180 days, they won't have to do anything with the board of health.
Okay.
That was one of our concern, that was one of our concern, and I think we're going to address during preparation of the ordinance.
Right.
Go ahead, go ahead. Now, what happens to the current licensee? Do they automatically get the extension?
Yeah, that's part of the resolution, is whoever is currently active would automatically be extended up to 180 days from their original signing date, not from today.
Okay. Now, what, as far as the Health Department goes, I'm assuming they do inspections?
Correct. And I've seen them myself personally firsthand when I was stopping by the Elite Sports Food Truck thing that they had, and I stopped by, it was like a day or two earlier, just to check out what's going on, just see the vibe of it. And I seen the Wayne County inspectors, I mean, they, it's pretty thorough.
I'm just curious if it's a one-time inspection, or they do it, 180 days, they do it every 30 days?
The directors, I think, said it was good for one year, correct?
Councilor Chair?
They get a license for a year.
Yeah, but you have to be inspected. Director Watland, you don't get inspected at all during that year?
You might get a pop-up inspection by the board of health, but they never have to schedule it. They just pop in.
Right, right, okay, yeah.
So, Director Baydun has something to do with this because he ran a food truck at one point years ago.
So, the way this actually works, Councilor Chair, and thank you, Councilman, you actually get approved through the Wayne County Health Department, or Oakland County, or whichever county that you get approved from, then there are called random visits where they can pop up within that year, but you never have to get renewed. You're just making sure that you're up to code, you're, you know, you're being clean, you're being cleansed, and they'll just randomly pop up. If you look dirty, you'll be questioned, they'll write you up for the things that you are, and then they'll keep checking back in on you periodically until making sure that that food truck is up to date. But as long as, as long as they pass their Wayne County Health Inspection, they don't have to repass another health inspection, but they will come in and just pop up to just make sure that they're still up to code.
I presume in addition to pop-ups, in case somebody ever makes a complaint, they'd probably also come over and check whatever particular food truck.
And they give them to the news, to the news, and they let people know, like, you know, either these people failed or not, and then the news takes it on to the next step.
Councilor Chair.
So, my question is, what happens after 180 days? They have to apply for a permit again from the city?
They have to apply again. We're hoping to have an ordinance in place before that. Now, government needless say, obviously moves slow, but we'll do the best we can to rush this thing as fast as possible to make sure it's within the next, before the six-month period is over.
Councilor Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
I have one last question, maybe Madam Clerk can answer this. When did we initially pass the first resolution?
Sometime in March. I know that they came to, I think it was the beginning.
Do you guys remember?
Just before Ramadan, just before Ramadan.
Yeah. And I think I know that we approved the food trucks, I think, the end of March, so I want to say we passed the resolution before that.
Now, also, the reasoning behind this is, A, to, you know, if somebody wants a food truck, different city events, different people's events, schools, et cetera, et cetera, they can have food trucks, and it creates great vibe in the city. But in addition to that, there was a challenge in the city in that people were opening up food trucks, food carts, tables, et cetera, et cetera, and it was the wild, wild west. People were just opening up with no inspections from the city, no Health Department checkups, no clerks' registrations, no licenses, nothing. It was a wild, wild west, and that's why I want something more formal, because I want the checks and balances to make sure that the city and the county knows who's opening up, because otherwise what was happening, I mean, you know, you'd come up and order, you know, I don't know, burger, hot dog, taco, whatever, and it was just some random person that's opening it up, and you had no idea on cleanliness, checking, permits, et cetera, et cetera. So, this is just to streamline it and make sure it's structured and they're operating properly and in a safe way. Okay? Councilman Ahmad, you had a question?
You know, I had another question, Councilor Chair, for the building director. What's the ordinance for like a one day or maybe one event? Is there an ordinance, do they have to pull a permit? Like having a food truck at a business or something for one day or maybe a couple hours? Because I've been seeing them, like everywhere.
Yes, they're supposed to be approved by the building department and the clerks for even one day.
Even for one day.
But I think there was a circumstance, and Eric, if you could crack me, Rick, I'm sorry. If I'm not mistaken, as I recall, if they've been approved, I think it was Councilman Baydun that brought that up a few months back, if they've been approved, like hypothetically, by Oakland County, and they pass the county test, the permits, the whole nine yards, and they're out of, I don't know, whatever city in Oakland County, and they come over here, they are authorized to go ahead and do a food truck, right?
Yes, but they should notify the building department so that we know the event.
And you have some documentation that they've been approved? Okay.
Correct. To know if we need police there or anybody else.
Correct. Okay. Any other comments, council members?
Councilor Chair?
Yes.
Oh, may I?
Was that you? Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Counselor.
In answer to the question, for instance, ice cream trucks that pass through, I think part of the ordinance that we've circulated to everyone would have, would cover 15-minute increments if they stop 15 minutes and keep moving. And we also include the trucks being checked out, make sure they have all their registration in addition to the vendor. The police chief and the department will check to see if there's any child abusers, any kind of CSC cases on the people serving the food, and the fire department will inspect the stoves themselves or the building department to see if the fire hydrants are up to speed and up to code. Those are all things that have to be constantly looked at. And then, we're seeing a lot of increase in other cities of food trucks that work with restaurants. So, we anticipate more than one. We have now one, but more coming in, even on the Amos on Michigan Avenue.
Yeah.
They've had food trucks there last summer. We've got previous clients that have food trucks representing their restaurants.
Right. And for those in the audience and council members, Corporation Council has already started, Roger's already started with an ordinance. He put in a preliminary ordinance through best practices, he's looked at throughout different cities. He's already started sending it to different directors, to the clerk, to myself, and of course, eventually it'll come to all the different council members with whatever particular changes and recommendations. So, this wheel's already started to turn. And I thank you for putting that together, Roger. Appreciate it. Okay. Any other questions on this? Hearing none. Motion made by Councilman Baydun, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is new business, and this is business license renewal for the Rusted Crowe Distillery.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Baydun?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council renew the business license for the Rusted Crowe Distillery located at 6056 North Telegraph Road as outlined in 13A.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Baydun and supported by Councilman Conston. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next up on the agenda is members of the public. First of all, I'd like to hear any comments from council members before anybody starts, please. I've contacted all the council members and asked that we keep announcements to as much of a minimum as we can. If it's something important, of course, state it, but if it's something that's not as important, maybe launch it on Facebook, your social media, whatever, so that we keep it to the minimum. Any council members with comments?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Wenzel, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. First of all, I know some other council members might be talking about this, I'll just be really brief. Thanks to the Dearborn Heights Professional Firefighters Union, Local 1355, for putting on the Fire Ops 101 this past Saturday for elected officials, and I didn't get to stay for the whole thing, but I've done it before. It's a really, really cool thing, and these guys had a great experience of it, I know. Now, the only thing I wanted to bring up is the event that was, that took place at the Warren Valley Golf Course, the car show, at our last meeting, it was a hot topic. I've been hearing, getting calls constantly about it. And at the last meeting, it was stated that we're going to live and learn from this so it doesn't happen again. And I was wondering, I don't know who can answer this question, what steps are we taking so far that this tragedy, this event like this won't happen again, you know, in our city, let alone at the Warren Valley Golf Course in particular?
I could, Councilman, answer that. I, myself, personally, went and met with Mr. Esau of the Esau Brothers LLC and spoke with him about the concerns that we all had as council members, the concerns that some of the residents had, and the concerns that he had, the mayor had, et cetera, et cetera. And we've had a long, we had a long discussion as far as making sure this type of an event, without going through the city, does not happen at this type of level. But most importantly, from his perspective, he did not anticipate anything like this. I can tell you, we've learned a lot from it, all of us as a whole, and I think in the future, it'll be a much smoother process.
Is there anything in particular we're doing? Someone mentioned putting gates on there, or, you know, I mean, is there anything, it's been two weeks, have we done anything at all?
Okay. Is this question to the mayors?
Yeah, yeah. You missed it, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
I've never had gates before.
Okay. The mayor mentioned there's never been gates there, and he doesn't know which funding we'd be able to use to put up gates there.
Okay, I see, that was one of the answers someone suggested, putting up gates. I think it was a council member even mentioned that. And one other thing that's a little disturbing on that is, you know, I'm all for business in the city of Dearborn Heights, you've got to make sure it's the right business, for sure, you just can't have any business. But this type of business that was celebrated, the grand opening, it's a pretty popular business, you know, everybody uses it, from younger people, older people. But from my understanding is that when they had this grand opening, they didn't have a business license. And I just inquired today, and as of today, they still don't have a business license. And is that an ordinance department issue, administration? Is there, Madam Clerk, is there a process that they're waiting for to get their license?
Not to my knowledge. I know that they get approval, they get the certificate of occupancy from the building department. The building department directs them to our office to obtain their business license.
Can they operate a business without a business license?
Not legally, I guess. I don't believe so. They don't have a business license.
That's something we should look into. I mean, like I say, I don't care what business it is, it should be operated.
Okay. So, Rick, I don't know, Rick, are you on there?
Yep.
Are you familiar with the answer to this question? To the Councilman's question, I'm sorry.
I know that they were waiting for Al to come back from Lebanon because there was a couple of things that they had to do. I know that they do have a CFO, they should be getting a business license very soon.
Are they, Director, are they open for business now?
Then I don't know. I haven't been by there. I know they do have cars in there, but I do not know if they're open to the public.
All right, thank you. So, we got, I guess we're going, you know, is that an ordinance issue then? I think that it falls under ordinance.
Much so.
Director Dischum, are you there? I'm sorry, there, Councilor Chair.
Director Dischum?
There he is.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I actually just met recently with Madam Treasurer, and I've met with the clerk before about this very issue. Unfortunately, that business that Councilman Wenzel is referring to is not the only one that doesn't have a business license. When I have the manpower, as you know, we've been focusing on doing the ordinance sweeps and other things, and I advise the clerk and the treasurer, when we have an opportunity, we will address the laundry list of businesses that don't have licenses. I'm assuming when I have an updated list, hopefully they'll have theirs by then, but I'm not sure, but the business that Mr. Wenzel keeps bringing up, hopefully will be in compliance. But if they're not, they will receive a ticket.
Director, you said there's several businesses. Can you email me a list of the businesses that don't have licenses?
I don't have that list right now myself, sir. I'm, we're going to get an updated list.
Councilman Wenzel?
I just don't, I just don't think... Director, you got cut off. You said updated list, but then you got cut off.
The spring and summer are incredibly busy for the ordinance department, and as you're aware, I don't have a lot of people, but I will make time with one of my business officers to address those that are not with, that don't have a business license coming up here very soon.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from council members?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Baydun?
Thank you, and I know we spoke through this, I'll be brief. Not that I believe I talk a lot. So, I'll just say, Councilor Chair, that Fire Ops 101, thank you so much to our firefighters. So, I'll just say, Council Chair, that Fire Ops 101, thank you so much to our firefighters. I also want everybody to know that that was completely paid for by the Dearborn Heights firefighter unions, that was paid out of their own pockets, and so, to the, you know, the guys and Lisa, thank you so much for that. I also want to let everybody know that I know the trees are starting to lose its leaves, and as the leaves continue to fall, please don't throw them out on the streets or shove them down the sewers, because that's what happens when it starts to rain and we start the flood. So, if you are gonna go out there, rake, rake your leaves, bag them, put them out, and I'm sure Priority will pick them up, but please do not blow or rake your leaves onto the street. Thank you so much, Council Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. That's a common mistake some residents make, because I know Dearborn has that, so they think it's the same way that's not.
Stop my neighbor today.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from council members?
Councilman Conston, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair. I too want to say thanks to the great job our police department, our fire department is doing. Couple of meetings ago, I mentioned some violence that was in the news, gun violence. It was not at all meant, but may have sounded like I was talking about city of Dearborn And then, number two, I think maybe only our clerk Lynn Senia, or I'm sure our CBG director Hassan Jamal remembers back in the day, for the tax foreclosures, the city of Dearborn Heights, instead of having the homes, selling them to nonprofits, they had this Neighborhood Stabilization Act. So, the city would hold the houses, then CBDG director would, they'd have different companies come in, work on the houses, put them, rehabilitate them, put them up for sale. Councilwoman Marge Horvath skewed and went up and down the, the city, then CDBD director and others, because, and, and we had McKennan Associates managing the properties, the city would, they'd point out, pay $50,000 for a new cupboard, and it was just, it was just impossible.
Yep.
So, we have a different process now for the tax foreclosure properties. Those, those properties, it'll always be, I'm sure, controversial. Years ago, it was three years, if you didn't pay your property taxes, they went to foreclosure sale, now it's two, and there's been some recent decisions about the county not being able to keep any profit from the sale of any home, so, but, you know, by and large, it's a good program to get those properties occupied by homeowners and taxpayers.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilman. Any other comments from council members? Hearing none, next up is announcements by anybody in the administration, please.
Council Chair and Mayor, just want to talk about a couple of things. First off, this Thursday from 10 to 8, Friday from 10 to 4, and Saturday from 10 to 4, the Friends of the Library will be having their book sale at Carolyn Candy Library, but lots of materials stored up, so come on out and get some good deals. Also, as another reminder, Saturday, October 29th from 6 to 9, at CK, and Sunday, October 30th, at JFK, from 6 to 9, we're gonna be having our trunk or treat, and spooky mini-golf programs at both libraries. Come join us, we hand out treats and play mini-golf in the library, with proceeds going to Dearborn Heights Goodfellows, looking for hole sponsors of 50 per hole, and the program is free to the public, any donations made are suggested. Finally, next Wednesday, October 19th, from 7 to 8:30 PM, U.S. Secret Service Agent Radford Jones will be giving a brief history of the Secret Service and some of the experiences when an agent, Agent Jones has 20 years of experience protecting six former presidents as well as heads of state. Registration is required, so call 313-791-3800 to join the discussion. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Director, Council Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Did the trunk or?
29th.
Well, the trunk or treat, can anybody come and park their car there and hand out candy, or how does that work?
Anyone who, first come, first served, kind of limited number of spots, so if anyone's interested, let me know, and anyone can. They have to register with you first to come there? Okay. Yeah, so we have some idea of parking spaces and the like, so, but yeah, 313-791-3804. And they're welcome to decorate their cars up and dress up and everything? Yeah. All right, thank you, that's pretty cool then. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any other announcements from any directors? Councilwoman, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to let everybody know that, where do they put it here? We will be having the Ekorst Creek Commission Meeting on, I believe it's October 25th, it's a Wednesday, 6 PM, and then on Thursday, the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association on the 26th at 7 PM, both are at the location of 3335 South Beach Daily. So, mark it on your calendar.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other announcements from administration?
We have Fire Chief Brogan.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Anybody else from the audience? Hearing none, Fire Chief, go ahead, please.
Here he goes.
Go ahead.
Actually, tonight, I'm, good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council, and I'm addressing you as President of the Dearborn Heights Goodfellows Association tonight. I just wanted to let everyone know, we're making our preparations for our normal event that's to be held in December, December 3rd will be the, our Day of Collection, but tonight I wanted to let everyone know, October 17th, which is the next coming Monday, we're having our next meeting, and that's the meeting where we take the picture for anyone that's gonna participate with Goodfellows, and we take the picture of all of us as a group, and that's what's on the cover of the Goodfellows paper. So, that meeting will be held at Fire Headquarters, like I said, this Monday, the 17th, at 7 PM. So, if you're interested in, in being in that picture, please show up, and we'll do the picture first, and then we'll hold the meeting second, so you don't have to stay for the meeting if you don't want to, but anyone who's interested in volunteering for Goodfellows, corner captains, and anyone else, please come on by and get in the photo.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
And Chief, you said the north end station?
The, the north end station at 7 o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Fire Chief. Any other announcements? All right, hearing none, next up is public comments, please come on, I'm sorry? Who was that, was that the chief?
Yeah, I think he was young and a skit or something.
Oh, okay, threw me off. All right, next up is, not those types of public comments, but let's go to regular public comments, you'll have three minutes, please state your name, the city, and street that you live on.
Council Chair, I'm not gonna use this, because you can't even tell the time.
Oh, I got you, okay, so let's go back to the old-school caveman way, if you don't mind.
Yeah, can we get another one? Maybe you can return this.
Do I ask you to use yours?
Yeah, I'm gonna use my, I'll use my cell.
No, he's got a cellphone, it's just to be able to let, so just let him on there, on those sheets I gave you. Go ahead.
Yep, hold on one second.
All right, we're gonna start in the audience, while I was getting that ready, let's, let's see if there's anybody, anybody on Zoom have any comments? One, once, twice, okay, nobody on Zoom, anybody in the audience have any comments? One, once, twice, three times, all right? Moved to adjourn? Moved to adjourn by Councilman Bedun, supported and seconded by? Council Chair. Councilwoman Breyer, any discussion? This is great, this is a great. All in favor, please state "aye." Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and good night.